Check our lights? Good, okay. Good afternoon and welcome to the May 8th Oklahoma City Planning Commission meeting. If you have pagers, cell phones, or similar devices, if you would silence those now, we would appreciate that. If you are not the applicant and you wish to talk to us about a case you're interested in, we have sign-up sheets. They look like this. They're on the table outside the chambers. And if you would complete it and hand it to us, we would be happy to hear you when we hear the case. And with that, we'll go to the minutes of the last meeting in April. Lose approval? Okay, I'm not voting, I wasn't here. Minutes are approved. And the next, Aubrey, is continuance requests?
There's only one uncontested request, which is item B-20 for SPUD 752, which would be deferred to May 22nd.
Anyone come today to talk to us about item 20 on our agenda?
Move the uncontested continuance.
Okay, we have a motion and second to continue item 20. Cast your votes. That's approved.
We have three new requests, be all deferred to May 22nd. Item B-13 for C-6595, item B-17 for PUD 1529, and item B-18 for C-6586.
Same question again. Anyone come today to talk to us about items 13, 17, or 18 on our agenda?
Move the additional continuance.
We have a motion and second to approve the additional continuances. Cast your votes. And those are approved. Are there any continuous requests from the public today? Consent docket?
There's only one item on the consent docket today. It's to initiate an application to close the platted streets and alleys lying south, southwest 3rd Street to southwest 8th Street between Hudson and Robinson Avenue.
Anyone come today to talk to us about item number one? Take the motion. Move item one. We have a motion and second to approve item one. Cast your votes. That's approved.
Item number two is ED 206, an application to dedicate the public street and utility easement for Highland Park Boulevard and Pawnee Avenue located west of Western and south of Memorial Road.
No one has signed up, and there is a variance, commissioners. Move variance TE 2. We have a motion and second to approve the variance to TE 2. Cast your votes. That's approved. Move the application. We have a motion and second to approve item 2. Cast your votes. And that's approved.
Item 3 is PC 10370 to rezone 12900 Northwest 10th Street from the AA and C-3 districts to the C-3 community commercial district.
Again, no one has signed up, commissioners.
Excuse me, this is on item number 3?
Yes.
Could I make some comments on it?
You may.
I got an email from Buck. This is in his area. The applicant informed him that on this particular site on Northwest 10th Street and Cemetery Road proposes to construct a 45-foot pole sign so that it's visible from the highway, which is like a half a mile away. Buck is not in favor of that, nor am I.
Well, I don't think he can do more than a 30-foot sign at that location.
Wait, let me get my point. Is that this is a combination of AA and C-3. The application goes into a AA area. Therefore, my question is of staff, and also my recommendation would be to continue this application and have them submit an SPUD so that we would know what the size of the sign is going to be, what it's going to look like, what the architecture is going to look like. This is obviously Chicken Express is a franchise operation, but just like John and McDonald's at Bricktown, you know, they probably think that they need a 45-foot sign, and in a C-3 area, they can put a 50-foot pole sign. Is that right?
Forty.
Wow.
Wow. The sign size is based on the amount of frontage of the lot, and so with that amount of frontage, they could have about 187 square feet. Maximum height would be 30 feet.
Okay, well, that's my point, is that we don't have any control over what goes on on this particular application, and it is going into AA and C-3, they can't put the Chicken Express on the AA portion, and I think that it should have been an SPUD.
They're rezoning the AA portion to C-3.
The point is, is that I would deny the rezoning until they submit an SPUD.
Give us your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon. My name is Sean McGraw. I am not the applicant. I am with the civil engineering group that works for the applicant. I'm with Red Plains Professional. We are at 2933 South Bryant in Edmond, Oklahoma. To answer your question, the applicant does intend to have that type of signage. We are familiar with the C-3 sign requirements. Right now, I'm going to submit to them a kind of a cost-benefit analysis, and they're going to weigh going after the variance to get that signage versed on what the cost is for the variance. At this point in time, we do request to go ahead and rezone, and I will let them know that the 30-foot is going to be the requirement at this time.
It's not acceptable to me, the 30-foot.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I've previously made a motion I'd like to withdraw.
I'm sorry?
I've previously made a motion on this case, and I would like to withdraw that motion.
You want to withdraw it?
I'll withdraw. The comments I've heard from the applicant's representatives, as well as what Commissioner Bright is aware of.
And I do. How do we vote on that, Susan? He made, there was a motion and second to approve this, then Bob made his comments, now Nick wants to withdraw the motion. Okay.
Motion, withdraw.
Okay, a motion and second to withdraw the motion. Cast your votes. That's withdrawn.
I move to continue this application with the requirement that the applicant submitted SPUD that has architectural information, what you're going to do, what the size of the sign is going to be. That way, there's control over this, but when you just said, and this is what Commissioner Irwin emailed me about, is that you're going to ask for the board of adjustment for a 45-foot sign, there's no way that's going to happen, and so an SPUD, I move to continue this for the next, the first meeting in June.
Well, first of all, do you agree to that?
Well, I understand, and what I'm trying to get at is, I believe that they weren't conveyed that process. I think that with me going back and presenting to them that with the C-3 rezoning, we're going to have a maximum 30-foot, I think that they are going to adjust their plans to do a 30-foot sign.
What do you think they're going to do? Well, there's no control whatsoever.
I believe there is control, and that's what I'm.
These are words. There's no contract that has any consideration, that has any value whatsoever between your client and our commission.
It has been suggested that you take a continuance, bring it back as a SPUD. Either agree to that, or we can hear it today on its merits right now. I think those are your two choices.
Well, then we'll agree to the continuance. We will agree to the continuance if that's the case.
Okay, we have a motion and second to continue item 3 until the first meeting in June. Cast your votes, and it's continued. Item 4 is a companion. Move to continue. A motion and second to continue item 4. Cast your votes, and that's approved as well.
Item 5 is SPUD 758, an application to rezone 1101, and it should be Northwest 38th Street from R1 to SPUD 758.
We do have people signed up on item 5, commissioners. Is the applicant here? Up, please.
While she's coming up, Chairman, I'd point out that our staff report indicates this is northeast 38th Street, it's probably northwest 38th Street.
Give us your name and address, please.
I'm Cody Thompson. I live at 1101 Northwest 38th Street.
Okay.
I'm looking to build a small, low-intensity studio for my interior design firm on my property. I have a double lot, and there's currently a void in the space north of my property facing Western, so I'd like to model after what is already there in the property adjacent to the north of me, and if you can tell right there, there's a void that you're seeing, so if we mirror what's going on directly north of me, then I'd like to add that studio, but maintain a very low-intensity use with a lot of limitations so that it's likely to shift back to residential, if anything, in the future. So I want it to be very ambiguous aesthetically, and I want to be respectful of the residential character of the area, because I plan on living there and raising a family in the house that I currently reside in. So this would just be a secondary building on my property that would face Western. Parking would be behind, so it would be screened by the building itself. The parking would also, having that parking behind the building would allow for me to take my personal cars off the street in front of my house on 38th Street, so it would actually improve the traffic flow on 38th. And I would utilize the vacated alleyway as the entrance to the parking behind the studio, so it would give more space to the tenants in the duplex to the north of me to turn around and for all of us to be able to enter directly onto Western, thus helping the traffic flow in that sense as well.
Okay, any questions of Ms. Thompson?
You're restricting this to single-family and administrative office, basically.
Yes.
Thank you.
Do have a couple people signed up. You'd give us your name and address, please.
It's Corey Lamb. It's 1121 Northwest 38th Street.
Thank you.
I live and have lived on 38th Street. I'm about six or seven houses to the west. I believe that my letter, when I initially send it, outlined some of the concerns that I have. My largest concern is not necessarily the traffic, but the impact architecturally, not necessarily in aesthetics, but just density. We have many properties were zoned R1, and we always have been, but there were many properties in that area that were grandfathered in. That grandfathering has led to, many people admit, they've converted their garages to apartments and things like that. So we have basically commercial use, even though it's residential, but mostly we have absentee landlords on that street. We have a lot of problems with traffic, with just general behavior and things like that. But my concern is not necessarily just with 38th Street, it's with Western. That stretch of Western, if you're familiar with it, is largely residential. We have some commercial properties down to the south, and we have a lot of Western Avenue traffic to the north. I think that area of town is best benefited by remaining residential, and my concern is not necessarily with Ms. Thompson, but just as much future use. She's, I believe the plans that she submitted to you indicate that she's planning on splitting that property, which to me further indicates that it's a commercial use. Even though it might fall under the spud, the splitting of that property says, okay, we're going to put a commercial property here and just continue that commercial trend south onto Western, and I'm just really very much against that.
Okay. Any questions of Ms. Lamb, commissioners? Thank you. Gina Opeco, if I pronounced that correctly?
Yes, Opeco.
You'd also give us your name and address?
Gina Opeco, O-P-E-C-K-O. I'm 1118 and 1120 Northwest 38th.
Thank you.
I have basically the same concerns that Ms. Lamb brought up in our area. It's a center-divided street, and because so many of the houses are multiple-family dwellings, we have a lot of street parking, and many of us in the neighborhood have had, we've lost property due to hit-and-run. Personally, my mother and I have lost a vehicle on the street due to a hit-and-run drunk driver that was never found. Many of us have lost pets due to the same thing. I'm concerned that if you bring more traffic into the area, that it's going to be even more safe for the children in our area, because the children use the center median as sort of a park area. They play through there quite a bit. But other residents, we're between Western and Classen, and people use our street as a cut-through typically, and I think because it's center-divided, they feel like they should drive faster than 25 miles per hour, and it's become dangerous, and that's mostly my concern. She says that she'll take traffic off of 38th Street, but if she orients towards Western, people going back towards Classen would just make a right and come back down our street to go towards Classen. So really, I don't see how she can take traffic away from our area.
Thank you very much. No one else has signed up?
I have a couple questions about this. This is one of the issues that is being reserved in the SPOD, so there are these, is required that the person, even if the building is separated, is required that this is the only person who occupies the property?
Yes.
And that's, and it's being made to some extent.
Correct.
No signage except for one patch sign, not to see cancer.
Correct.
That could see that, that, oh, yeah, that was, that's not necessary, it's just subtle backlighting.
Ms. Thompson? I'm sorry, could you come to the microphone, because this is recorded, and people would be able to hear what you said.
Sure, sorry. That's just subtle backlighting. If I could be specific, it's raised letters, like iron letters, that just have very subtle backlighting behind each letter, but it's not an actual transparent sign with fluorescent lighting.
You might want to submit a detail between here and council.
Okay.
I have the utmost sympathy for the people who've come to speak in opposition to this today. I have had all the same concerns. This is a project that was proposed quite a long time ago, when the house that was on the corner of 38th and Western was in really rough condition, and the applicant moved into the house, completely remodeled it, she's been living there ever since, and, you know, we met at that time, and we talked about, you know, the things that I would really like to see happen, that it needed to be very low-scale, it needed to be one-story, it needed to be, you know, oriented onto Western, it needed to be not another curb cut, you know, it needed to be very, very low-impact in terms of, you know, signage and lighting and all that kind of stuff. And, you know, they've taken their time, they've gotten a feel for the neighborhood, they're, you know, well-established there. They have done all those things, and they have been willing to, you know, present an SPUD that actually commits to the use that they want to make of the property. I actually do think that the layout that they have planned will alleviate some of the traffic off of 38th Street. They have a very wide side yard on the west, so much so, in fact, that it would be possible for them to put a driveway and a garage on the west side at the back of the house if they choose to do that in the future, so they're not in any way diminishing the residential use of the house itself. And I'm very comfortable with this application, and I'm going to move approval of it.
We have a motion and second to approve item 5. Cast your votes. It's approved.
Item 6 is SPUD 764, an application to rezone 4,000 North Stair Road from R1 to SPUD 764.
I'm Brandon Kuhn with Hewitt Zollers, 2832 West Wilshire, representing the applicant. There are two TEs, and we agree with both of them. On number 2, we will provide a fire lane.
No one has signed up, commissioners? We have a motion and second to approve item 6. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Item 7 is ABC 808, an application for an ABC 1 overlay for the PUD 707 district located at 801 Northwest 122nd Street.
Randy Malone, 209 Southwest 89th Street, Suite F, in Oklahoma City. I represent the applicants.
My only comment is 137,400 square feet of ABC 1.
Yeah, this is, this is, you may notice it's Legends baseball fields.
I understand, but then here's the larger, this is grandstands or concessions and everything else, and I don't know what the restrictions are, but there could be, you know, rock-and-roll concerts all over the baseball field.
Well, the owner is back here. If you'd like to.
I just don't know, to get my hands around 137,400 square feet of ABC 1. I have fame. I don't know, I don't know how to deal with it. It's, you know, it's several square blocks.
Well, let me.
Acres. How many? It's several acres.
Acres, okay. Let me be in all candid with this commission.
Is it possible to restrict these to the concession areas, I mean, or the grandstand areas rather than the whole ballpark?
This is a softball complex.
Well, as you're, do you mean?
What's going on there is, we're going to be playing softball games, we're going to be playing tournaments, people are going to be drinking beer all day long, playing ball.
Out there on the field?
Well, they may not be drinking it on the field, but it will be everywhere else. And as the competition increases, so do the, so's the heat and the tempers. This is a powder keg to me.
Well, I will say this, my clients sitting back here purchased this property in December of last year, and they're doing this right. The previous owner had, was selling beer out there for three years and never bothered to get a city license. My, and they've never had any problems, is my point, like that. But anytime you sell.
Who told them?
You got all kinds of restaurants that are open all day with the same problem. I mean, I agree, it's a problem, and it's a concern.
I understand, I've played in a lot of softball, and I've seen a lot of benches empty, and I've seen a lot of ice chests being pulled around, okay? I know what, I know what happens when they're done that. I'm not, I'm just not thinking this is a good move on the city's part.
I just have a question. A couple, Janice and I were talking, okay, so the diamonds are, those parts encircled around, they go around the outside, is that right, Randy?
Yes.
There's the dashed lines, the dashed lines, okay? And then it looks like those are grandstands or walkways going to eat for each diamond, correct? Up and down?
This is Todd Curry.
Kind of the Ts?
Can I answer the question?
Off the, they go to the, right? Am I reading that correct?
I'm going to slow you down. I need your name and address for the record first.
Todd Curry. My address is 1203 Huntington Avenue, Nichols Hills, 73116.
Thank you, Todd. Go ahead.
So you have the Ts that come off there that look like grandstands to me, right?
Yes, that covers the bleachers and the dugouts.
All right, and then, and then you have the larger patch there, is that the main entrance into the facility?
Well, the main entrance is up by the building marked PUD 707. You'll go down there, that is just kind of an open grassy area where we run adult softball leagues, so they'll, during the weeknights, so we'll have, you know, games, a team may have a game at 6 o'clock and not have a game again until 9 o'clock or 8 o'clock. So during, between those games, they will kind of congregate on that grassy area right out in front of the concession stand. The concession stand is the small square box kind of right in the center of the dotted area.
Oh, right there.
That's the concession stand.
So was that directly sat, that larger area directly sat, no, 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 in that, right down from the concession stand, where that track, right there, what is that?
That's just a big grassy area, open area.
All right.
The, so the idea is, this is where the players, the majority of it is players, they have some spectators, will be on those evenings, they'll buy beer at the concession stand, and they may go sit in the stands or actually even be in the dugouts during the games. And this is adult softball.
I have a question. The previous owner served beer out here for 30 years or something like that, is that right? For three years?
Yeah.
But is there any restriction on a fellow bringing his own six-pack in a cooler and bringing it onto the premises?
We restrict them. We don't allow any outside food or beverage into the facility.
Well, but that is, I can see that if you're going to sell beer.
Well, also.
Takes away your enterprise.
Well, also, you know, it gives us the ability to monitor, to ID, to monitor the intake that individuals have. I mean, if somebody, you know, these are people that are playing sports, they're not sitting and, you know, bellied up to a bar knocking out a case of beer, you know, it's a, you know, a one or two while they're between games or whatever, so, but it gives us the ability to monitor what people or what their intake is and, you know, not serve to people who are, who have been over-served, and to monitor, make sure people are of age that are buying it, things along those lines.
I just have, I really have a problem with 137,000-foot of beer area in this type of setting.
Well, I mean, the problem is, it's a, it's a twelve-field park, it's a 71-acre park. We're trying to restrict it to where just those folks are, but, you know, we'll have, during a league, league night, we can have, you know, the majority of these larger fields in use. So, you know, we'll have people on each of those fields, so it just kind of encompasses a large area, but it's specific to that area. To address the concern of, you know, you know, we could have a large concert out there and serve beer to everybody, well, you know, if everybody fit in these little narrow areas, but that's not our goal. I mean, you know, we're operating a baseball softball park, and that's the core business that we're, that we're in. We're not looking to host festivals or concerts or just anything that's beer-centric. It's not a core chunk of our business, but it is a differentiator. There's a lot of adult softball parks around town. A lot, most of them are municipality-owned, and we need something that kind of differentiates us to be a draw for those folks. You know, if they go play in the Mustang Park, you know, they don't serve beer, so everybody goes out in the parking lot and gets in the back of their truck and drinks beer. So this way, you know, we're trying to keep them on the park and bring people here and kind of control that the best that we can.
Does the PUD limit the use to adult participants?
The existing PUD that's on the site? No, the PUD is industrial mix, it just happened to also allow sports facility.
So, I mean, I understand, you're saying that this is an adult softball business that you're in, but there's not anything that we have that limits it to that. So that's some concern, I think. We've recently gone through this same discussion over soccer fields where, you know, children have access at certain times, and adults have access at certain times, and.
And this is similar to that. It's not, you know, we're not IDing at the door and keeping children out, so there's, yeah, there would definitely be a mix of adults and children.
What are the two areas to the south and east of the proposed area? Is that two more ball?
There are actually four more fields on the south side of the property. Those are used for youth sports on the weekends.
So you've got youth on two diamonds that are not. So you got youth on two, two diamonds that are not...
Well, we have, the, the four diamonds on the, on the bottom are, aren't used for the adult leagues. They're only used for youth sports. That's why the, the A.B.C. overlay doesn't encompass those fields. There's no reason to have alcohol there.
I mean, I guess if this was like an amusement park, what would we say? What's the difference? Just they're doing softball. If it was six flags and they wanted a beer license, what would we say?
Or if this was a indoor golfing range?
Yeah. Well, I mean...
Again, there are, there are adults and children involved. I mean, I'm...
Right.
Having a little trouble with the, some of the arguments, but I mean, I, I see the point. The, the thing that I see is 71 acres and we're only talking about this small portion. That, that's the, that's the part that I'm having trouble with is, I, I mean, I have children that are in activities and we go to events that have alcohol and some that don't.
Yeah.
And again, I don't have the experience that some of you have with this sport, but I, I think to, to have a negative connotation because it's softball and, and not soccer or not golf where this kind of stuff happens or not Disneyland, I, that's just the, that's, that's the trouble I'm having with...
To your point, we have five, six city-owned golf courses that do not at all restrict where you can't, in fact, they sell beer on the golf course. How many acres, how many square feet? They have, they have beer carts. They drive around and sell beer. They sell beer in the clubhouse and then they have beer carts that sell beer out on the golf course.
And you don't have to be 21 to play golf?
On the municipal courses, on Lincoln, Hefner, you can name it.
I mean, it's not, it's not a gun range.
No. And so, I, I mean, as Janice has remarked to me several times and again today, and I agree, you know, I, I just don't see the difference here. We're going to play softball or we're going to go to the golf course? Same diff.
How many heated golf matches have you seen?
Well, I've, I've, I've seen a few, but perhaps not that, but I mean...
And were they swinging golf clubs like they swing baseball?
Well, it's just, it's just the activity and the size of the area.
Is this just another one of those ways in which our A.B.C. 1, 2, 3 system doesn't work very well? And the only thing that's really stubbing our toe here is the sheer number, 137,000 square feet. But when you look at the business they have, there's really not any other way to configure where they would in fact be serving the, the beer, you know? You've got to be able to get from the concession stand to where you're sitting and in order to take your beer with you from there to there, that's all got to be, you know, serve, serving area. I mean, I, I totally get that, I, I don't have any problem at all with them serving beer at softball games. I don't attend softball games very regularly because they do tend to get out of hand and that's, you know, not necessarily something I want to participate in. But I, I mean, that's something that goes on everywhere, all over the city, all the time.
Yeah, but I've seen also where they have developments similar and what they'll do, they'll have it restrained to the concession stand and then they'll have an area around the concession stand where you can sit there and, and, and take consumption of your beer or your beverage. And you don't, you don't mingle all through the whole complex with it.
But that's not what they do down at the ballpark. I mean, you know...
But that's, that's a different type of setting.
As he just indicated, here you can go buy your beer and go drink it in the dugout. If you're in the dugout...
Right.
What does that tell you? You're a player. You're in the middle of a ballgame.
Right.
Well, I mean, if you're choosing to shave your game a little bit by, you know, by, if you're, if you're, I mean, that's, I don't have a problem with that. I, I don't have a problem with that. And you can go down to the ballpark downtown and get a beer and drink it anywhere in the stands.
Not in the dugout.
And not on the field.
I'm not worried about the players drinking.
Well, we were reminded last meeting that when you impose or when you're granted an A.B.C. 1, 2, or 3 on the property, it sticks, no matter if you own it or if anybody else own it. And the area that's, that's designated, A.B.C. 1 sticks with the property. If you're out of there, then somebody else can come in with this venue and do something entirely different than what you're telling us to be done and have 137,400 square feet of A.B.C. 1 without regard to softball. I mean, this is, this is what I'm bringing up is that some sort of geographical outline that really accommodates beer and hot dogs, I mean, this, it's on the golf course. You're, you're right, Mike. It's just like, that's not a problem with me. It's just, I think, I really do think, really, if you want to, you know, funnel it down, I don't know, you play softball, Nick, beer in the dugouts? Well, it's softball, you know, it's, I mean, I understand that. But it's the large grassy area that you've got that's kind of a, you know, a venue to go out there and just have a great time on the, that big, that big portion south of the square, you know? That kind of concerns me is having that be, that be allowed to have this consumption on this open grassy area that really, you know, I don't know, that's, that's my, my point because it runs with the land once it's granted.
How, well, our goal was to put a, kind of a covered, there is a, a covered pavilion, you can see that small square right there, and maybe to expand that a little bit, just to give people a break from shade.
Well, that's, okay. Well, like, like James said, here's the concession and then here's the area around it that you have tables, chairs, et cetera, you know? But, but you're out there rolling around on the grassy knoll, you know, with, I, you know, that, I, I could support it if you would have that concession stand and then an area around it where there's chairs, tables, you know, kind of, you know, fenced off because of what you were talking, Jim, is, you know, there's, there's children's leagues working in this place too. So there's that kind of, a dugout is restricted, the grandstands are, you know, they're contained. But when you throw in a big grassy area, you know, that just kind of pours out into the whole thing. That would be my recommendation. I don't know how the other commissioners would feel, but...
Nick?
I'm not saying you want to do this and I'm not even certain it would work, I'm asking the staff. If you brought this application back, put it in a, some type of an S.P.U.D. with restrictions and where it could be and couldn't be served, that might make it more palatable and somehow cut down that 137,000 feet. The point well made, the next operator that comes in here may want 137,000 foot honky-tonk, not a softball field. I'm not against drinking beer at a softball game. I've never done that. But I, I think this is a slippery slope the way, the way it's a straight A.B.C. and we have no, no future control of it at all.
Well, I mean, we're all for restricting what can happen with it after we're done because our goal obviously is to run this park and...
But we can't.
Yeah, I, I don't know how to do that either.
Well, he was making a suggestion.
Commissioner Gales just made a suggestion that you could do it with an S.P.U.D. I'm, I'm with Commissioner Ayers. I mean, I, I see both sides of it. I've got problems with the fact that you're going to have youth leagues here and you're going to have adult leagues. It's a huge area to put an, an alcohol overlay on and have it be unrestricted. On the other hand, I've had more than one, one beer at a ballgame too. So the idea of there being some control over how we do this, I think, might be palatable to the commission.
But some of those other venues that we're speaking of, ballfields and golf courses, they have a specific use. It's, you know, it's not a, just an open end.
And competition can get pretty heated between teams and I'm even more concerned about parents and youth games. I mean, where parents get really wrapped up in how their kids are doing. So I would suggest that you consider an S.P.U.D. If you want us to vote on your application as it is before us today, we will do that.
Okay.
That would be...
Request continuance.
First meeting in June, then?
Yeah.
Okay. Do I have a motion and a second?
I'm moved if we continue this item till the first meeting in June.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to continue item seven for 30 days. Cast your votes and it's continued. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number eight is C.E. 879, an application to close a portion of Southeast 27th Street located between South Phillips Avenue and South High Avenue.
Hello, my name is Amelia Bardwell. I'm the manager of manufacturing engineering at Cameron International. Address is 845 Southeast 29th Street, 73129.
Is S. Chaudry here? Did you mean to sign up for item eight or item nine? And you want roads to stay open on... Okay, you're talking about the access to the neighborhood. I don't mean to confuse you, but you're asking to, to close a street and he's got a, a note here saying he'd like a road to stay open and I just want to make sure it wasn't your application that he was addressing.
No, we are asking to close the portion between Phillips and High. We operate on both sides of it. So we store raw materials on the north side of 27th Street. We continuously have forklifts and people traveling across 27th Street to access material. We do a lot of waste removal across the street. We've done a study to see kind of how often we cross the street and we estimate 40 to 50 times daily. We run a two-shift operation, so we run all the way until midnight where we have employees needing to access this material. It is extremely unsafe because at the same time that we have forklifts traveling, traveling across, people traveling across, we have semi-trucks coming through that street as well as neighborhood traffic. And so it's an extremely dangerous safety potential for our employees.
Has there ever been any accidents or incidents with your employees or the neighbors?
Um, not that we...
How much traffic is there on there?
Um, how would you like me to estimate that?
Well, I, I don't know. You, you know how many trips you make, but...
It, it's just all day long. I mean, there's a neighborhood right, right to the east of us and then there is High Street, which is a very industrial street. And so there's heavy equipment traveling across the street all of the time.
But the traffic is pretty much continual all day?
Yeah, it's not like there's a steady stream, but it's, I don't know how you would estimate it, just intermittently throughout the day. It's just road...
Yeah, we've, we've got to balance the needs of the neighborhood with, with your needs because closing a street is not something we typically like to do because we like the connectivity to allow people to move conveniently and efficiently from their homes as well as for you to operate your business, so...
Right. Well, if High, 27th doesn't go any further than High Street.
Oh, I know, but that's, that's how I would get out of my neighborhood if I lived there.
Most of, most of the neighbors that we've spoken to use 25th quite a bit because they don't like going across our street where we have forklifts and people traveling across it.
Okay, so you were going to give us some information. Would you give us your name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Ed Rainbolt, 845 Southeast 29th. I'm the maintenance manager.
In response to my question, then?
Uh, we had an accident recently that was actually on High Street where one of a, a car actually ran into one of our vehicles, uh, right there on the corner of 27th and High.
Okay.
If I may, John, how do you take, so you would, do you take access off of 27th Street and High into your property currently? How do you access it? Or better question, how do you access your property?
So employees that come into the property for employee parking come off of Phillips. The exit is off of 27th Street. So the employees exit off of, onto 27th Street.
So your employees would continue to come down 27th Street into your facility or down to, you're, are you going to block the street off?
Yes, that would be our plan is, sorry, to block one side of it, to force employees to go one direction.
Okay, so...
Onto High.
You're...
How many employees do you have?
We employ 400-plus employees.
Okay, so you have...
In just our plant, yes.
400 trips a day, basically?
Not, not all of our employees park in this parking lot. We have about 150 employees that park off of 29th Street. There's a parking lot right at 29th and Phillips at the front of the property. So the back parking lot probably has 250 to 300 parking spaces.
So your traffic is over two shifts?
Yes, we operate until midnight.
And is that five days a week or...
Yes, five days a week and then Saturdays we usually work every other Saturday, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. That's an overtime shift.
I'm still not convinced of this traffic flow, quite frankly. I mean, I, I don't get how 400 people are getting in and out of the lot, right? Post, after your closing?
Well, the 400 and...
Wait a minute, just a second. If you let me ask a question, I think I might get a better answer.
Okay.
Post the closing, what is going to be, tell me how the people get in and out of your property.
So we, we run on two shifts, so 400 people aren't at the facility all at one time. There's two shifts.
So there's 200?
Yeah. And so to get into the parking lot, they enter on Phillips Street.
Right.
They're north. And then when they leave at three, the first shift ends at 3:30.
Right.
So they will exit 27th Street there. There's a small entrance you can see, or an exit there. They exit and right now they go right or left...
Correct.
To go, you know, whichever direction they need to go.
Right.
And so we would be directing traffic one way, out of our property.
So they would, they would exit out of your property, onto 27th, back to the east to High. And that would be closed then down there across 27th Street on the west end of your property.
Correct.
So we'd be steering property, traffic back onto High, or I guess they could still exit back out to Phillips and go down to 29, too, either way.
They cannot go out that, the entrance.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, no, that's a one-way gate.
Okay. All right. I get it now. Thank you.
Sorry, I interrupted you.
Is there anybody here in opposition to...
No, I, I would have told you. No one signed up?
We, we've spoken to a few neighbors in the area and they have been in favor of this. Their ma- major concern was to not direct traffic to, towards the neighborhood, actually. It was to direct it away from the neighborhood.
Has there been any consideration, the, I looked at the staff report and the only troubling thing that I have in the staff report is that the residents, the last sentence or phrase, would need to travel north to 26th Street to access High or perform an unprotected left turn from Phillips onto Southeast 29th. When you go down south and you turn left, there's no traffic control, I assume, at all on Southeast 29th Street.
Right, there, there's just a light at High.
See, there was a, there's a stop sign at 29th and Phillips.
Yes.
And then Southeast 29th Street is at a heavily traveled...
Mm-hmm. Yes, very much so.
So essentially what you're forcing them to do is no matter what, they have to go north because they can't get, they can't turn left on Southeast 29th if you close off that street.
They, we would be forcing them to go towards High.
That's what I'm saying.
And you would go, yes, north or south, depending on which way you, you went home.
And, and so, the, I didn't, I don't know. That's what concerned me. And I, I, I probably, they probably do want, they probably do want you to close that off so that you don't get any other traffic on Phillips that, that, that they've been used to dealing with. And it, that's why, that's why, Mr. Chairman, there's no protest. They're saying, good, get me, get out of here.
Yeah, it might end up in that way, Bob, you're right, eliminating some traffic off Phillips.
The what?
It might... It might eliminate traffic off Phillips.
Yeah, when you shut that down, and then they can deal... Then they can say, "Woo, you know, finally," because I'm... Just like the application that we had where the guy wanted to expand his distributorship, and they were doing the semis on, was it Seventh or Eighth Street, a two-lane little thing. You know, they want to close off that street, just, you know, just to get rid of it. So with that, and no protests, I'll move to approve this application.
I just have one quick question, and this may be for staff. What's the recommendation? How are they going to keep people from turning off of High onto West, onto Southeast Twenty-Seventh? I know it's going to be blocked at some point, but they're not... They're not going to be... It's not going to be blocked at High unless... Because it's just going to be blocked to the west side of their exit from the parking lot. Is that accurate?
Yes, but we would put an employee gate... We would put a gate...
Access gate.
An access gate, because...
At High?
At High and Twenty-Seventh.
Okay, I got you. I got you, okay. I didn't...
Then you'd have a solid barricade at Twenty-Seventh and Phillips?
Correct.
So there would be no...
That would be our plan, yes, is to not have...
Coming or going on at Twenty-Seventh and Phillips.
Correct.
That's just to be a...
And that's important, that there's absolutely no gate that does this. It's gone.
Correct, yeah.
And just one more question before we vote. Where do your vendors with their eighteen-wheelers deliver materials to you? Will they be coming through a gate you'll open from High on Twenty-Seventh Street? Is that how you'll do that?
Yes. Currently, we do both receiving and shipping of product. So some vendors come in on Phillips now. So our shipping docks are on Phillips, the kind of first... I wish I had a laser pointer because I'm bad at describing, but the first entrance that you see on Phillips is our truck... Up a little more. Up, 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 right there. So right below... Just below that line where you're at, that's our entrance for trucks. And so in that drive is where they're doing some delivery of incoming receipts, and we do shipment. We also, though, do incoming receipts at our raw yard, which is part of the reason we're wanting to close it off. So really, what we would do is take over the... There's grass on either side of Twenty-Seventh Street. So one, we would work on doing a drive for our trucks, and then the other would be the employee entrance.
So basically, are you going to close off all access to Phillips? Because if just closing Twenty-Seventh, that deals with one set of the traffic, but then you have the entrance off of Phillips for your delivery, and then it looks like another entrance to the parking lot off of Phillips. So are you going to eliminate all that so that they wouldn't have that impact on the residents?
The truck entrance will remain the same that it is today on Phillips. It's there today. It will remain. It has to. Our shipping and receiving docks are on that side of the building, so...
So now the residents are going to be forced to come out of Twenty-Seventh and Twenty-Sixth to go to Twenty-Ninth, and they're going to have to still deal with maneuvering around the trucks delivering things?
They can...
And we're forcing this so they don't even have an opportunity to go straight across Twenty-Seventh?
There's semis on Twenty-Seventh Street, too. So we're taking half the problem away.
But to close off...
Are you going to close your drive to your parking lot, too?
I don't know.
Which one?
On the Phillips side.
For the employees to enter?
Yes.
That was not in the plans?
So we still have a parking lot going on Phillips?
To go in.
We still have the trucks going on Phillips. So all we're doing is eliminating the cross... Problem with the forklifts and going across Twenty-Seventh?
But you raised a good point about... Okay, so now, we're not getting... All deliveries are now forced onto Phillips?
Every one? Every one of them?
Every one.
Not half?
All.
Well, I understand that currently you take deliveries off of Twenty-Seventh, so now they're all forced onto Phillips, so...
I'm not...
That's not what she said. They'll still take deliveries off of Twenty-Seventh Street because their raw materials are on the lot to the north.
Yes.
So vendors making... Suppliers making deliveries of raw materials are going to come in there still from High Street on the east.
There's going to be a drive at High onto their property. I don't see... I can't tell what we've got now. I mean, basically, that street remains open except for being closed at the west end, so you could still take deliveries off of Twenty-Seventh Street because I don't want to force all the traffic onto Phillips. I don't think that's a good answer.
I don't either, and here's what my...
All the delivery traffic onto Phillips. I don't think that's a good answer.
The suggestion would be, you know, you said that's where our... That's the back of the building. The way I look at the aerial map, et cetera, there's this big square where the trucks come in off of Phillips to do whatever they do. I would be more comfortable closing off that street if you had everything, deliveries and receipts coming off of Southeast Twenty-Ninth, off of High, and you come in on the north side and reroute your trucks.
We would have to rearrange our entire facility to do that.
They can't do that if they've got their loading docks, Bob. Their loading docks... I mean, they've got an existing building with loading docks, and the loading docks are on the west side of the building, and they get there from Phillips. I mean, you're like saying, "Well, we'll tear down the building or pick it up and turn it around so the loading docks are somewhere else," and they can't do that.
But I'm thinking... What I'm thinking of is what Mike's saying, or what Jamie said, is that other than the people who live off of Twenty-Seventh and Twenty-Eighth Street that want to go down there to get to High, they now can't because these... You know, so that's the only thing that changes. They can't, and all the trucks are still going up and down Phillips, and all the employees' cars are still going up and down there, and all you've done is inconvenience two blocks of neighbors.
And protected them from being hit and protecting our employees from being hit.
But then also what we're doing, we're forcing, if you want to go to High and if you want to go to Twenty-Ninth, you want to go west onto Twenty-Ninth, that's forcing everyone, everyone up to Twenty-Sixth Street, east on Twenty-Street, Twenty-Sixth Street, and then go to High and come around. So we're still making it real inconvenient to me for the residents, and that's my problem with it. We're not really solving all of the problem, but we're putting... Imposing some other things on the residents in two manners.
And your employees... Your employees that park in this lot just south of Twenty-Seventh, when they come to work and leave, they use Phillips, going and coming, correct? Or do they cut across Twenty-Seventh Street and go up High to the right?
They go... Honestly, they go all directions. When they exit, some go east, some go west, and then from there, they go north and they go south.
But if we close Twenty-Seventh, they're all going to go down Phillips?
High.
How do they get to High?
Exit Twenty-Seventh and over to High.
We exit onto Twenty-Seventh Street right there.
There's an exit from the employee parking lot on Twenty-Seventh.
Okay, yeah, I see it now. I see it.
Still one on Twenty-Seventh, I mean, on Phillips, too?
And there's an...
When you look at the aerial photograph.
There's an entrance, an employee entrance on Phillips, and then the trucks enter and exit on Phillips, which is the same as it is today.
So there's no employee exit from that parking lot onto Phillips? They exit?
No.
Okay.
I just have to say, frankly, if I'm misconfused, having looked at this and having this many questions, then I don't think the application is particularly very well explained. I just got... Due respect, but I do a lot of these. I mean, it's... I shouldn't have so darn many questions.
That's fair. Honestly, the instruction we were given, we were not told to submit a future plan. We have that, so if...
Well, you know, maybe, perhaps, I mean, maybe you ought to take a couple of weeks or a first meeting in June and let us see your plans because we've got... I'm not... I don't think it's well-baked, personally. Do you, Jimmy? I mean...
I think we've whooped this horse to death. You know, Traffic and Safety's looked at it. They're okay with it, and we're trying to redesign it, you know, to work with Traffic and Safety, you know. Say we got a motion on the floor, let us vote.
Motion on the second on the floor.
I agree. I'm ready to vote. Well, if there's no further discussion, cast your votes. Well, four to four. You're back in two weeks anyway, so come back with the plan you've developed and so we can actually see how it flows.
That is fine. Yes, we will do that.
Thank you. We'll see you in two weeks.
Item number nine is CE sixty-five sixty-five, final plat of West Lake Development located south of Memorial Road and west of MacArthur Boulevard.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Dwight Butler with Anchor Engineering on behalf of the applicant. We have read through the TEs, and I believe Terry Massey was going to strike TE number And with that being done, we would agree to the rest of the TEs, and respectfully request the approval of this application.
Okay, now we'll hear from Mr. Chaudry.
Can I ask Dwight a question before?
Sure.
Dwight, Dwight, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Just for clarity, and I see it's not a part of the plat, but is West Lake Memorial Parkway going to be closed?
West Lake Memorial Park... You're talking about the east-west road on the north side of this?
Yes.
No, sir, we don't intend on closing any.
I mean, on the west... It's on the northwest side, right next to the service road on Memorial Road. It's not within your plat?
No, sir, and the boundary... The outer boundary of the plat appears as though we are putting a blockage across there when, in fact, all that is is a representative of the boundary. We don't intend to close anything.
Okay.
Okay, and Dwight, I didn't hear exactly what you were saying about TE six. Would you clarify that?
Well, there's a misconception that that was a public street, and it's not. They're all private. And that they were asking us to remove the private notation, and we got everything corrected, and they do need it to stay on there because it is, in fact, a private street.
Okay. Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Mr. Chaudry, you'd give us your name and address and share your thoughts?
Yeah, S. Chaudry, sixty-seven hundred West Memorial Road. We own property to the... Just to the west of their land. I just wanted the reassurance from the owners and the commission that the road, which is already in existence and operational, from Memorial Road, West Memorial Road going east outwardly direction, where it says private access, one hundred thirty-fifth Street to MacArthur, stays open like it is now, and we are not blockaded out where their west boundary is.
So where they show private access, the north-south?
Yes, private access is one hundred thirty-fifth Street. It's operational right now, and if you go east on there, you'll hit MacArthur. If you go west on there, you can go north to Memorial Road. And where that dotted line is on the northwest corner, that's where the road takes a turn and is open now, and I just wanted a reassurance that it stays open like it is now and is not shut off.
Mr. Butler is nodding yes, it's not going to change.
Just to be clear, you're talking about the street where... Up there where it says private access, Eastman?
Yes.
Yeah, and it runs parallel to Memorial?
Runs parallel to Memorial, runs on the south side of the restaurants.
Yes, going all the way to Memorial Parkway.
Runs up behind all the restaurants, all the way to Memorial, or all the way to MacArthur, yeah.
So we have access from our property to MacArthur?
Correct, correct.
Well, even though Mr. Butler is nodding his head...
That stays open.
If it's private, we don't really have any control over whether it stays open or not.
And that's what we want to talk with Mr. Butler about.
It's been open for a long time, and it still is open, and we'd appreciate if it stays open.
Okay, well, we'll talk to Mr. Butler about it. Thank you.
I know that, right?
You are... Obviously, I drive on that road he's referring to, probably three or four times a week, and I was not aware that that was not a public street.
That came as a rare surprise, and I did have a testing company. We had intended on dedicating all these streets to the public. I had a testing company go out and test it, and they did not quite meet the city requirements. Therefore, we have elected to keep them private.
There's deliveries that go up and down there to the tire store. There's the back... That's the backside of the tire store and all the restaurants.
Well, you have Interurban, you have...
Yeah.
It's a place, you have the tire store all the way up.
And there's more on the way, I'm sure. Yeah, I agree.
It has been there for years, and it's still in remarkable good shape, but before I tried to dedicate it to the city, I wanted to verify, and it didn't come back as I had hoped. So this is the only recourse that I can think of.
I can just imagine the fear of those people with memorial footage that believe that also is a public street on the back of their lot.
Well, that's the only way you can get westbound from MacArthur back that way because that's a one-way service road to service those businesses.
Any of those businesses.
Exactly, exactly right, man.
That's correct.
And if I'm not mistaken, on each of their deeds, they were... That's part of the Homeowners Association, and they were made aware of that fact. When they purchased the property, they had to sign on to the Homeowners Association. Now, the Homeowners Association has not been totally established yet. Moneys have not been paid for the maintenance of the street at this time. That is being rectified. This has been going on since the late nineties. I've been trying to fix it ever since.
As a private access, Eastman, it will have to stay open. It just won't be maintained by the city, but it will remain open as it's on the plat.
Okay. All right, that's our answer.
So you're in agreement with all the TEs except we need to delete TE six?
Yes, sir.
Any other comments or protests?
Nathan Maddenwald with the Utilities Department. I just want to make a clarification on the water main extension. They don't have to extend a water main along the eastern and northern part of Lot One. Lot One and Two are currently served.
Okay. Second. We have a motion in second to approve item nine, deleting TE six. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Thank you very much.
Item ten is CE sixty-six hundred, the final plat of Southport, Phase One, west of Mustang Road and south of Hefner Road.
Good afternoon, Kendall Dillan, Crafton Toll, representing the applicant, and this is a final plat that matches preliminary plat. We're in agreement with the TEs and would ask for your approval.
And no one has signed up.
I'm going to approve, second.
We have a motion in second to approve item ten. Cast your votes, and item ten is approved.
Item eleven is CE sixty-five seventy-six, the final plat of Spencerville, located north of northeast one hundred and twenty-second, west of Air Depot Boulevard.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Dwight Butler with Anchor Engineering on behalf of the applicant. This is a rather strange application in that the frontage that we have on one hundred and twenty-second, there's no way we can meet site distance requirements, so we are requesting a variance to TE number three, which would allow us primary access through an existing stubout street on an existing subdivision.
Dwight, how much frontage do you have on one hundred and twenty-second?
I don't recall exactly, but it seems like it's about six hundred feet.
And nowhere in that six hundred feet...
No, sir.
...would a curb cut?
No, sir. There's not a curb, but we...
Well, I understand. It's cut.
I mean, I could raise my entry road so that the people coming out of the subdivision could see safely, but someone trying to turn north into from coming eastbound would have... There's a very good chance of a head-on going that way.
Okay, what is the land to the east of yours that's not included in this plat?
That is owned by the Corps of Engineers, as is a part of the subdivision next door, part of Nottingham. It appears as though Lot Number Two on Nottingham is also owned by the Corps of Engineers.
Okay, that's all Corps, and that's all undevelopable, basically?
Yes, sir. And one thing we are offering to the neighbors next door is we will sprinkle all of these primary structures. We are doing a lot of the timber clearing and such, so we think we're representing a very good fire break for them.
When I look at the aerial, I see what appears to be some type of an entrance into this land right on the far corner, the far southeast corner.
That's a pipeline crossing, sir. There's two pipelines with valves coming up across there.
That's pipeline?
Yes, sir.
And that, you can't even go there?
No, sir. It's... No, sir, it's, we met out there, my field crew shot it twice, we met out there with traffic twice, we've, we have tried every way possible to get a site, now, we could lower the speed limit to 25.
You need a power tripod.
Yes, sir, you definitely, and that is a, the speed limit is 45, but I hadn't seen anybody going under 60 out there, it was pretty bad.
Dwight, is Nottingham in agreement with you connecting to that street?
I have knocked on every door in the subdivision, spoken to everyone that would come to the door, I haven't heard anything negative, but I have not been able to speak with every individual.
And how many have you spoken with, what, a half a dozen lots in there?
We actually physically spoke with four of the seven.
Four of the seven, okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, come on up. And give us your name and address, please.
My name is Tiffany Bondrant and I actually live at 6504 Hunter Drive, and I am right there, I guess would be on one. And so he is gonna take away my cul-de-sac, I have three children, we, when we bought the home, we wanted a well-established neighborhood so we wouldn't have to incur this, and I have three children again, so I wanted to make sure that they had a cul-de-sac. Our house was built in 1980s, so again, established. I haven't spoken with many of the neighbors, but there's only a few of us that have the kids there, and I understand it's gonna still be a cul-de-sac, but not, they're adding eight lots, that's, you can figure two cars per house, that's 16 cars coming and going, you know, I feel like, I didn't dispute them building there in the first place, but now that they want to utilize the cul-de-sac, that's what I'm disputing, I feel like they can go back to the drawing board and figure out something else.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
As I have said, we've tried the drawing board every way but upside down to try to get access to this piece of property. The original plat of Nottingham does in fact, show the access drive out with the cul-de-sac to be temporary, to be removed when the road was extended, back when it was platted. Yes, sir.
So Nottingham was platted that way?
I beg your pardon?
Nottingham addition was platted the way?
Yes, sir.
For the cul-de-sac to come out?
Yes, sir, to, yes.
I'm assuming Nottingham is built out, that Lot One in Nottingham, on the, to the west of Hunter Drive, has a residence on it?
Yes, sir, it is totally built out except for the one lot owned by the Corps of Engineers.
I'd like to see Nottingham's plat, for one thing. I know you don't have it, but, sitting here with you, but...
Do we have access to the internet, we can get it on the county assessor's website very quickly.
Well, if somebody can do that and feed it to our screens, that would be fine.
OklahomaCounty.org?
You wanna move this to the Hill and let him try to do that, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, that's a good suggestion.
Table this for, I can run across the street and get a copy from the ninth floor.
Well, they're searching the...
We'll move to the Hill.
Website anyway, but...
Terry's gonna step in and print a copy.
Okay.
In the interest of time, if you would like to table this until that comes back, I would be more than...
Yes, please, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Because I'm not sure, there's not another way to draw this, too.
Okay, then, item twelve?
Yes, please.
PC 10368, an application to rezone 9735 West Memorial Road from AA to R1 Single Family District.
I'm Lex Kudania with MGR Inc., if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Commissioner, there's no one has signed up on item twelve.
The one big question I have on this one is, we've got 80 acres here almost, 79.46 acres, and it's just a great R1 zoning request. Why no PUD on?
I'm sorry?
Why didn't you bring this application forward in a PUD with some, rather than a cookie cutter, stamp out R1?
Well, I don't mind bringing PUD, but we have, I looked at it, the density is 3.7, more than seven, eight thousand, nine thousand square foot lots. We have agreed to put the landscaping around, around both sides of the streets, on other sides of the street, and I feel like, and we gave the recreation area, open areas, and I thought that should be sufficient, but if you need PUD, and if there is any particular thing you are looking at it, tell me and we'll do it, PUD.
Go ahead, James.
I have, when I look at this, the layout, one of my real concerns is, I don't know the name of the street, but the one on your far east, it looks like it's a mile long almost, you know, just a race back.
I'm sorry?
It'd be good if you could do something.
It's a wrong sketch, we have revised it, it's with the application for prelim plate.
This is all we have to look at, though.
Well, item thirteen, which was continued, would be a companion item to this, if he presented it today and he shows cul-de-sacs and a common area?
Yeah.
Halfway up the east side. But between now and when you bring that back, I'd like, assuming this gets approved as it sits, I'd like to discuss the PUD or the plat, preliminary plat with you.
I have asked for continuous for May 22nd, if you want to ask for PUD, and if you think there is certain things you are looking at it, tell me and I'll extend that thing, I'll ask you to extend the next meeting for June 1st, for first week of June.
With a PUD, we can see better what you intend to do rather than just a wide-open R1 zoning. With a parcel this large, I would prefer to see it in a PUD.
Okay. So continue for, I will ask you to continue for first week of June rather than May 22nd, both the items, please.
Can you do it that fast? It's fine with me, but, okay.
Thank you.
He's probably done this before, so moved. Okay, we'll motion and second to continue item twelve and come back with a PUD, cast your votes, and that's approved.
Is this the time to also ask for continuing prelim plate, which is continued till May 22nd to June, first week of June?
Yes, we'll continue that to the same date, so we'll get a motion.
So moved.
Second.
That'd be 13.
No, we're doing item 13.
13.
Which, yes, so we're gonna do it again because it's a companion to the zoning. Right. All right, we need a motion to reconsider the item 13.
I'll make a motion, I will reconsider item 13.
Cast your votes, okay, that's approved, now we need a motion to...
Continue it until the first meeting?
First meeting in June?
Second.
Okay. Cast your votes, and item 13's continued to the first meeting in June as well.
Thank you.
Item fourteen is PC 10369, an application to rezone 924 Southeast 44th Street from the C3 District to the I2 Moderate Industrial District.
Hi, I'm Ron Nguyen with Nguyen Engineering, representing the applicant. We're asking for a rezoning from C3 to I2 originally, staff recommended that we go to an I1 usage for this property, which the owner of the property agrees will be fine with him and he'll be able to comply with all the I1 requirements, so we do agree with that.
No one has signed up, Nick, go ahead.
One question, apparently in this existing banquet hall, there's ABC 3234, I'm assuming you no longer need that ABC and that if you convert it to industrial use, it will go away six months?
If it's not used?
How do we make that ABC go away? They would lose their license, but the ABC won't go away, and I'd like to somehow make the ABC go away.
The property owner would have to apply to rezone it from the ABC.
There's no way he could agree to make that part of this application?
Would be if he would come in with an SPOD. It'd have to be refiled, wouldn't it?
I don't know how much amendment.
Yeah, the owner has no intention of utilizing ABC.
I understand, and it's cleanup, housekeeping, I have no problem with this application as it is, except for that thing is sitting there and I would...
Can't we just do that, can't we just say that he's amended, that he's seeking rezoning from C3 and ABC whatever to I1?
Or could we add a T?
We'd have to re-notify, wouldn't we, Susan?
Yeah, we would.
Well, can we add a TE to this application that that will be done?
No, it's a straight rezoning application, we don't have the ability to add TE's.
Oh, we'd have to re...
You'd have to continue it to re- notifying and come back.
Well, when we continue, they'll re-notify also, don't they? Won't they re-notify when we continue?
We could get it back in 30 days.
If the applicant will agree to the continuance and to refile it.
But that...
Let me ask the owner if that would fit into his schedule, because he's...
Yeah, I know, that's what I'm concerned about.
And that's not, I'm not trying to do that either.
There's not a short way to do what you want to do.
I'm Pradeep Medpalli, I live on 8800 South Druckcell, and basically we're trying to operate wholesale operations off of this location, we try to retail, but there's so many retail stores around us, it's hardly we can do any business. If this building continuously stays as a retail, hardly anyone do any business over there because there's the big retail stores, and I've been trying hard from last September, hardly we made any sales for the retail, so that we're trying to do wholesale operations. Initially, we're looking for I2, but I2, later on I find out, it's gonna be like a heavy industrial or something, but all I need is a wholesale operations to be run from this location. And we are about to close this, closing, do the closing on the property also, eventually we're buying this property also within this month, so...
There's one other option, you could allow this application to go forward, and the planning commission has the ability to initiate rezoning applications, so you on your own could initiate a rezoning of the ABC3, if he has no need for the ABC.
Are you agreeable to that?
Yeah, we are.
Yeah, we can.
Okay, so we'll bring that back at the next meeting.
Okay. All right. No one has signed up, so I'll take a motion.
Approved with the stipulation that was presented.
And that this will be I1, not I2, amended to I1?
Right.
Okay, cast your votes, that's approved, thank you.
Item number 15, SPOD 762, to rezone 916 Southwest 29th from I1 and R1 Districts to SPOD 762.
Ma'am, your application is coming back, you know that? Okay.
My name's Cruz Cardenas, my residence is 3016 South Cladron, 3016 South Cladron would be the first residential house.
Are you the applicant?
No.
We need to hear from the applicant.
Okay.
Then we'll hear from you.
Okay, thank you.
Is the applicant here?
He's the owner and the applicant.
Well, that's who we want to talk to first. Give us your name and address, please.
My name is Bob Tahari, I own the 916 Southwest 29th, and I have two lots in the back, I didn't know, it's empty for a long, long time. So Southwest 29th improving and getting so beautiful in the city, I tried to make my car lot pretty and improve over there, and I had a two old building, one was garage, one was office, and I demolished the garage, then tried to take my office in the back, make a new office, then in the city I find out, I made a mistake and they are not commercial.
Okay.
Then I tried to, you know, SPOD, then if I can make my office pretty and operate over there, because getting better and improving at 29th Street.
Okay, now we'll hear from your neighbor. Now, Mr. Cardenas.
Okay, thank you, sir. My name is Cruz Cardenas, I'm a resident of 3016 South Cladron, 3016 would be the first residential house on the south side. I'm retired from the General Motors Corporation, I've been a member of this community since 1967, our community has always had problems with rezoning. Mr. Tahari is a good man, as long as he understands that there has to be a no see-through fence between residential and commercial or I1, and as long as he understands the rules and regulations of this commission, and the commission passes it, there is no problem. I've talked to several of the neighbors and I've told them about it, about thirty-some odd years ago, we fought this, tooth and nails, and we, we just, we won, and now we're just a reverse of this. Is there any questions to anybody?
He'll have to comply with the...
No, that he'll do it, if he wants to put that kind of building up, if most of the, most of the residents there is already rentals, so it's just like me and another guy owns property there, there were, actually, I own two pieces of property there, we're the only ones that has the property, so everybody else, back on rentals, they can deduct it, but on your residential, you can't, so your insurance and your taxes, so...
I'm not sure what you're concerned about, he'll have to screen, he'll have to put a fence up.
Yeah, as long as, as long as he puts a screen up.
It's gonna have to be a site-proof fence, that's what the ordinance provides.
Okay. When, long before him started, the people that bought that car lot, bought the car lot, they bought 3012, 3014, and then I lived on 3016, they bought the two houses. They moved that one house completely out, they did the groundwork, they put a no see-through fence all across, and then they came to the commission, wanting the commission to approve it, they didn't approve it.
Well, that's not what's before us today, that's not gonna happen now.
Okay, and that's why I'm here, to make sure that he understands that, you know, that we've gotta have a no see-through fence, and that he understands the rules and regulations of this commission, and the commission passes it, it's fine with us.
It'll, that's what it'll be.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I say something, excuse me, the requirements of the SPOD, this is all to your benefit, it eliminates, it eliminates every single use that would be annoying or reprehensible to you as a neighbor, it only has these uses confined to very, very limited amounts of things that can go on that property. Second, is that I, you know, I applaud the SPOD, it has architectural controls, it has signage controls, it has fencing controls, all these things are to your benefit and the neighbors, and I think that it's a very, very good application for a car dealership, which sometimes go completely out of control, this one I don't think does, so I would move to approve it. This one, I don't think does, so I would move to approve it.
We have a motion and a second to approve item fifteen. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I wasn't on, but I voted yes.
Okay. Item sixteen is SPUD seven sixty-three, to rezone thirty-one zero four Northwestern Avenue from PUD three ninety-six to SPUD seven sixty-three.
Good afternoon, Troy Humphrey. On behalf of the applicant, one-one-four Northwest Sixth Street here in Oklahoma City.
No one has signed up, commissioners? You're okay with the TE's, Troy?
Yeah, I would like to mention just one. Item number four states that the dumpsters need to be no closer than fifty feet from all property lines adjacent to residential zoning use. The property itself is only fifty-eight feet wide. That would put the dumpster nearly on the street frontage.
I think you could build it up.
Is that better?
You could build it up and be fifty feet away.
Yes, if you could go vertical, but I think that would be opposed.
How wide is the lot?
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight.
I have a survey, if you would like to see it.
Yes.
We're fine with deleting the fifty-foot requirement, as long as he does the screening and locates it in accordance with code.
Right.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any discussion, commissioners? Motion? Okay, we have a motion and a second approving item sixteen and deleting...
Deleting TE four.
Yeah. Yes.
Modified with screening.
I was gonna say deleting the fifty-foot requirement.
Correct.
Now, cast your votes. And you're approved.
Thank you very much.
Item seventeen and eighteen were continued. Item nineteen is PUD fifteen thirty-three, to rezone thirteen five oh one North Bryan Avenue from double A to PUD fifteen thirty-three.
I'm Don Navard, forty-eight hundred North Lincoln Boulevard, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. On behalf of the applicant, this is an item that was continued from a couple of weeks ago, and we have met with the homeowner association. This is a collaboration, if you will, between Oklahoma City, Oklahoma Christian University and the developer. It is to create a senior living center, largely to replace the existing living, senior living center on the Oklahoma Christian University campus, which is being renovated for student housing. So this was a working relationship between the developer and Oklahoma Christian University. There were issues that arose with respect to the housing addition to the south, and the staff was generous enough, along with Councilman Pettis, to meet with the developers and the housing addition members who are present here today, and we hammered out a resolution that was acceptable to all parties, and staff has looked at that and approved that, and I believe we are now all on the same page with respect to the development of the property.
Don, my understanding is now the, there will be an easement along, is that right? Or a setback?
Set, yeah, there's gonna be a large setback along the south side, and we also, at the request of the housing addition, changed the frontage of those residential property units on the south side. Originally, we had the entrances facing south, and now we turned it around. So everybody is happy.
I understand you're leaving trees in that setback?
Correct, there will be a...
And moving the, was it a sewer line?
Yes.
And you're moving that north also?
More? We are...
From the, in other words, from the property line? Give us, if you're gonna speak, give us your name and address, please.
I'm the applicant. My name is Greg Jones. I'm with Teal Creek. The sewer line runs north-south along our property, and then proceeds west along the university property, in between the university and the homeowners. And what we've done is provide a thirty-five foot, well, actually, the university has provided the thirty-five feet natural buffer with a fifteen-foot water and sewer zone. And we have also a thirty-five foot natural buffer between our proposal and the neighborhood. I went out and visited with several of the neighbors. In one of the backyards, we hung up ribbons at twenty-five feet and thirty-five feet, and we took a look, and I agreed with them, thirty-five feet works better. They're here. I don't know if you guys want to hear from them at this point, but, and I can't speak for them, I don't have to speak for myself.
If they want to tell us something, they certainly will, but if you're obviously telling us what they've agreed to, they're gonna be fine with it. I just want to hear it in the record.
Yes, we did, and it's in the PUD, and staff has approved it.
Okay, thank you. No one signed up. Commissioners, comments?
Don, a couple of questions. We have five tracks in this application, and as we progress through those tracks, you keep adding a use here and there. And we start off track one being congregant care, got it. And then track two, we use multifamily, fifty years of older or senior living. We get to track three, four, and five, we have multifamily over fifty, senior living, and congregant care again. Do we know what we're getting here, and how many ultimately, how many units are gonna be on this property?
Yes, yeah, we have, we have maximized the number of units at the request of staff. For instance, track five, no more than twenty units, and of those, no more four duplex, I mean, four together. So, yeah, that's a maximum of five of those. So the largest facility is at track one, which is the farthest away from the residential.
And I understand that one.
Okay.
But two, three, and four, I understand five now, but two, three, four, and five, I was not clear on, and that's what I'm, what I'm trying to...
Okay. Yeah, go ahead. This is, now, should I name this?
My name is Steve Sersansky. I live in northwest Oklahoma City at, on seven eight four four Northwest one hundred thirty-first. And the plan is that track two will be senior living. It's gonna be a three-story seventy-two, I'm sorry, seventy-six unit building. Track three and four will all be one-story buildings under the R four zone. We could build a lot more, but we're planning on building just the cottage-type units, or their townhomes, I'm sorry, is what they will be. And track five is actually, we downzoned that to R two, and I, and Don just told you, that's gonna be a maximum of twenty units on there. So I think that actually, three and four will probably have about twenty in each of those. So, and that, that plan hasn't been finalized yet, because it's probably a year out from the beginning of this project.
And that's one of the problems I'm having with this application. All of this density discussion we just had, I couldn't find that in.
I do have a PowerPoint that shows the design of this property, and I don't know if, staff has already put it up, but I, I have one in my pocket, if you'd like to put it up on the screen.
I am absolutely good with what you just described, if we can incorporate that in, into this, this application.
We'd be more than glad to. The only, the only limiting request from staff was track five, and we, we did that. So we would certainly be glad to limit track three and four, if that's pursuant to our plan. It won't be dense at all, or just single family.
Yeah, and I'm not trying to limit it, I'm trying to define it.
I think saying if you just define, that's what you said, into application, then...
We'd be more than glad to do that.
Okay. No one signed up?
Oh, that was my question. I just would like to make an observation about the contrast between today and the meeting that we had two weeks ago on this application, where the entire neighborhood was up in arms, what are you doing, et cetera? And this just proves that communication between the applicant and the neighbors, and getting rid of all sorts of imaginary things, and you come together, like you've said, Don, you know, everything was worked out through the staff, et cetera, and I applaud that, that's my comment, so...
Did you move? I move approval of the application with the modifications.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve item nineteen. It's conditioned. Cast your votes, and that's approved. Yep.
We're back to item eleven.
Item eleven.
For the record, once again, Dwight Butler with Anchor Engineering, on behalf of the applicant. I'm hoping you're able to read the, the notes at the stubout. Yeah. And were there any other way to access this property? I would certainly do it. Yeah.
Certainly clarifies it.
Yeah, well, the Nottingham plat provides a temporary road easement, which is the cul-de-sac, to be abandoned when the road is extended. That's the way your original plat was approved.
I'm just guessing, whoever sold you your lot didn't tell you that?
Well, why would I ask when you're thinking about the house that was...
Well, we're not gonna be able to hear you, I'm sorry.
Wait.
Wait, 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 don't, get to the mic, there we go, thank you.
Why would I think that? I need to know that whenever I, you know, the, excuse me, the addition is already established. My home in particular, built in nineteen eighties, why would I even think, question it, first off?
I totally understand, and if I were in your situation, I would be just as upset as I imagine you are.
Well, I think that, again, you know, he can, he can go back to the drawing board and do something. I, I'm almost positive that he can, and I'm asking for you guys to force him to do that.
In that regard, why...
If I thought that that were possible, I would be right there with you.
Well, in that regard, let's talk about that for a minute, because I had a case similar to this out on one hundred and sixty-four street. We have a sight distance problem everywhere on your frontage on one hundred and twenty-second, correct? And before I said you needed a taller tripod?
Yes, sir.
How much taller of a tripod do you need? How far do we miss this?
Oh, we were, right now, the sight distance we, we achieved is only three hundred and twenty feet, and it needs to be over six hundred and thirty.
Wow.
It's considerable, but...
You've only have six hundred feet of fronting.
Yes, sir.
Well, how can you have six hundred feet of...
Sight distance.
I understand, but by definition, you could never have it.
No, sight distance down the road, not along my frontage.
But what, from your, you're going down to the west, correct?
Yes, sir.
So from your farthest east point, from your farthest east point, if I...
I'm, I'm starting up the hill from my farthest east point.
If I, if I'm coming, and I redesign your, your plat, and I put a, an entrance right in the far northeast corner of your plat?
Southeast?
I'm sorry, southeast.
I would be at the bottom of the hill, starting up, the top of the hill is almost due south of the cul-de-sac. I don't have the sight distance going over the hill.
Okay, but here's, here's what I'm looking at. Look at Lot one, up there on Hundred Drive, how deep is that lot?
Lot one?
Yeah, on Hundred Drive in Nottingham, just, just to the east of you.
How deep, north-south?
No, east-west, how deep is that?
I'm sorry, Nick, I don't have a copy of that plat.
Well, okay, I do. It looks like it's two hundred and twenty-five feet. So that street has an extra two hundred feet from your boundary.
Yes, sir.
So if I, if I put the entrance all the way in, up in the corner of your Lot one, I, granted, wouldn't have the six hundred feet. I got it. I'm not sure this one has the six hundred feet, the way you're talking either, and I'm wondering if we want to grant a variance there rather than, than do this, and I'd like to hear from the traffic people about that.
I would be more than happy to reconfigure my subdivision with it coming out onto one hundred and twenty-second, if I could get a variance on sight distance.
Well, and I'm, I'm not sure you can, I'm not, but before we do something here, I'd like to at least explore that.
Yes, sir.
Let me ask a question. Well, Hundred Drive is located in Nottingham, the existing Hundred Drive?
Yes, sir.
Is that at the top of the hill, or is that...
No, sir, the top.
It's not even at the top of the hill?
It is not at the...
I know it's going down to the...
Yes, it is, it is on the west side, going downhill to the west.
Okay.
The top of the hill is actually south of subject, or subject property, but the mound of the hill is so steep, it's not elongated enough. Technically, the speed limit along there should not be forty-five, but traffic wasn't interested in slowing down the speed limit. And with the sight distance we have, we would have to drop it to twenty-five mile an hour to be in compliance.
Well, I'm with you, Nick, I'd like to, before we do something that can't be undone... Traffic guy's back there still?
This is the third meeting in a row the traffic has been AWOL in, after about thirty minutes of the meeting. Do we have traffic support, or do we not?
Good question.
Well, that...
We'll have it next time.
Perhaps.
Dwight, would you?
For today?
Would you have a problem with figuring out what we're gonna do?
I would have absolutely zero problem.
To kind of work through some of that?
I want to investigate every avenue. I have no problem whatsoever deferring this, and hopefully, we can come up with a way for us to front onto one hundred and twenty-second. I would much rather do that than...
Would that be your preference, Dwight?
Yes, sir. Oh, you bet, you bet.
I'd like to move that we continue this item for two weeks, to the May twenty-second meeting. Yeah, meet with traffic and...
We have a motion and a second to continue item eleven to May twenty-second. Cast your votes.
Thank you very much.
We will have traffic here next time. Sorry for the delay.
Item twenty was continued, and that was the last of the items for individual consideration.
Okay, commissioners? Couple of things, you would have gotten an email from JJ this morning. I don't know if everyone had a chance to see it. But Urban Land Institute has extended the benefit of coming under the city for membership. Not that the city will pay it, but that the fee will be reduced to a hundred dollars for boards and commissions of the city whose members would like to be part of ULI. I would recommend it. I've learned an awful lot being involved with ULI over the last several years. They, they're an advocacy group just for good, good ideas. There's a lot of good planning resources available through them, lots of good meetings that occur, good programs that they put on, and if you're not a member already, it will only cost a hundred dollars a year to be a member, as long as you're on the commission, and I would urge you to do it.
Chairman, I'd make one comment about that. When ULI came down with a certain amount of fanfare, several of us joined. And in joining, they sent an invoice for dues, which was paid. The last thing I ever heard, ULI.
Well...
Until I received a dues renewal notice later. That's not the way to run a...
There were some bumps in the early days, because it was all volunteers. The organization has matured significantly, I think. There's a really excellent group of young leaders involved in it now, and the programs and activities are well organized, well promoted, well attended, actually. And the programs and activities are well-organized, well-promoted, well-attended, actually. And I would suggest that it's a worthwhile thing to reconsider, Nick, and for those of you who never joined, to consider doing so now.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make an observation about the dues. When I joined this commission, there was a policy of the planning department to send one of us to a seminar, sometimes in San Francisco, sometimes in Chicago, all expenses paid, et cetera. Well, of course, I was on the very end of the recipients of that and never did get to go do that. It would seem, it would seem logical that, just like they paid for us to go to the mayor's roundtable, you know, that, waiving that, it would seem logical that there's enough budget. I know that we're overpaid. I understand that totally. But there's a budget that we could all benefit from joining that. And by joining that, with the tuition or the fees being paid by the city in recognition of all the hours that we spent on this planning commission to improve our ability to do our work. That's my observation.
Well-- The city's not going to pay you $100, but you'll be pleased to know that Aubrey and I have both been talking to the manager's office about sending commissioners to ULI semi-annual and annual meetings or American Planning Association semi-annual and annual meetings. And there's an agreement that they're willing to do that if the interest is expressed. And that would be a couple thousand dollar benefit. And now, if you want to trade that for the $100 ULI fee, I can probably negotiate that.
When's the last time any of us went on one of those junkets?
Well--
A year ago.
Are you listening to me? The point, the point is now that will be available should you be interested. The other thing is that there is a program tomorrow at Rose State for both planning commissioners and Board of Adjustment members. You were all made aware of it back when. And the planning commission segment starts at 8:00 tomorrow morning, and the Board of Adjustment segment is in the afternoon. So, again, if you're interested, I'll see you there. And planning commission members?
Just one quick comment, Mr. Chairman.
I, I think you can just say hi. I'm a planning commissioner, and they'll let you in.
In that regard, Mr. Chairman, I am registered for that. Found out this morning I will not be able to attend, so if somebody wants to take my slot, there's already one slot available.
Okay. Planning Department?
I think I mentioned this in the last meeting, but just a reminder that we're, we're going to be convening some study sessions to review the proposed CIP. May 22nd will be the first study session meeting. I think we have several departments scheduled to review those. May take a series of three study sessions to review all of the departments' proposals. But we'll be beginning that process later this month.
Development Services? Municipal Counselor? Motion to adjourn. And we're adjourned.